Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We call this meeting in the Monongahia County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on our agenda is consent and approval with our county administrator, Renata McCord. Good morning, Renata.
Good morning, Renata.
Good morning.
We have six exonerations for $1,972.22. Minutes for February 28th, 2024. Vouchers: General County Fund, $205,259.30, 911, $10,007.12, Chestnut Ridge Park, $5,427.60, Camp Muffley, $3,029.13, Mason Dixon Park, $6,2909. Assessors valuation, $1,151.66. Purchasing card vouchers: General County, $3,0962.27, 911, $205.89, Camp Muffley, $455.50, Mason Dixon Park, $42.95. Assessors valuation, $948.50, for a voucher total of $231,824.68. We have no budget revisions. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website and fiduciary orders for March 6th, 2024.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent approval agenda items? That's the Senate?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any additional fiduciary items?
No, sir.
We did have the one item that was...
It required no action from the commission.
Okay. Can I make one suggestion though, because there was a error in that report.
Okay.
He utilized the wrong number for the proportion.
Okay.
The calculations are the same, but item seven needs to be adjusted so that the percentages are adjusted. And I know that sounds complicated, but if you look at it, you'll see. So his overall numbers, the suggested settlements are good. It's just the final number seven should read, "Since the remaining claims, $10,067.93 far exceed the remaining funds in the estate, each claimant will be paid on a proportionate share of their outstanding claim in a ratio of $4,157.67 divided by $10,067.93," or .4129618.
Do you mind providing those to me after the meeting?
Sure. I'm sorry, I thought we won't bring that up as a separate...
Yeah, there was no actual item for the commission to consider this morning.
The numbers and everything are the same, are correct. It's just that he uses the wrong proportions.
Yeah, if you don't mind just giving me those after the meeting, I will forward those on to George.
Okay. So with that one exception, we have approved the consent agenda. We'll go ahead and address it. Again, the overall report is correct, it's just that one item. Sorry about that. Introduction to new employees, personnel changes.
Okay, we've got a couple on the agenda. Youth Services Center has two part-time relief workers, Laura Cole and Abigail Pitzak, both starting today, March 6th. Like I said, part-time relief worker, not eligible for benefits, $14.40 per hour.
Move to approve the two employees as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Okay, we also have with us Diana Sanders on behalf of Prosecuting Attorney's Office.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Diana, hello.
I am here in place of Gabe. She is down there doing a murder trial, day two. I am happy to present Nick DiMedici, which I'm sure you all are familiar with. He grew up in this county commission office. He is going to be taking Troy Ball's place as the investigator for our office. Troy Ball is transferring over to the Saki Grant Project III.
Move to approve the employee change and the addition as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome again, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Do we have any other personnel?
No, not that I'm aware of, sir.
Okay, comments from the public. We will now open the public portion comment of our meeting. Any member of the public that wishes to be heard, please raise your hand, come forward, provide your name and address, and be heard. The timing of your discussion will be limited at the discretion of the president. Open up the public portion comment, section. Okay, seeing none, go ahead and close public portion. Colleen Coon, Grants.
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, so I have two grant applications. The first one is for the Saki Grant Program for the Project Area Three Site Coordinator, and that is in the amount of $121,865. That would be for Troy. And then the second one is the West Virginia Treatment Supervision Grant Program. This would be for the Day Report Center. They are wanting, they're applying for this for a peer recovery support specialist and a clinical case manager, and that amount is $70,406.
Move to approve the president signing the grant documents as presented.
Second, with a question.
Okay.
Just the 120, do we have to do anything else to approve that position or that Saki position, or is it automatically?
He is, so he is already at the prosecutor's office, so he'll just have to be transferred from there.
Okay, I didn't know if we had to do anything.
There's to the grant.
Okay.
Technically, you have to approve it. I had a letter, but...
We just included that in my motion for the transfer.
You did?
Yeah. When we did adding the employee.
Okay.
Okay, that's why I didn't...
I didn't catch that, sorry.
I didn't either, that's my fault.
Yes, he mentioned that he approved the transfer and the new employees.
Okay, I didn't catch that either. Okay, never mind.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is proclamation, American Red Cross Month 2024. Do we have someone here for the proclamation? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Keely, Executive Director, American Red Cross of Allegheny Highlands. Also, I want to send regards from Melissa Hornbeck, who is the Chair of our Volunteer Board of Directors. She couldn't be here today, but I have various team members with me who I'd like to introduce for a moment. First, I'll introduce a board member, Dr. Chris Pline with us. So he's again a volunteer for us in our board. Holly Childs is a new staff person that helps us with mask care and logistics. And then we have Miley Stewart and Kristy Hahn, who help us with operations. And last but not least, this is Mr. Sid Morrison, who is a newest member of our Board of Directors as a volunteer again, but also a significant biomed volunteer. He volunteers dozens and dozens and dozens of hours to support our blood drives. So just a little background there, and I don't know how you want to proceed from here. I will make some comments about our service delivery after maybe the proclamation.
Okay, if you want to go ahead and read the proclamation.
Whereas during Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion of people in West Virginia and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. And whereas this generous spirit is woven into the fabric of the community and advances the humanitarian legacy of the American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who notably dedicated herself to alleviating suffering. And whereas today, kind-hearted individuals in our community exemplify Barton's commitment as they provide a beacon of hope for our neighbors in need. Through their voluntary and selfless contributions, they make a life-saving difference in people's darkest hours, whether it is in delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting military families, veterans, and caregivers throughout the unique challenges of service, saving lives with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or diverting aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crisis. And whereas last year, the Mon County Commission, or the Mon County of the American Red Cross of Allegheny Highlands Chapter assisted 15 families impacted by house fires, collected 3,568 units of blood at 147 drives, provided 88 case services to military members and families, and conducted CPR first aid training for 1,143 people. And now therefore, in recognition of the important work done by the American Red Cross, the Monongahia County Commission does hereby proclaim this month of March as American Red Cross Month in honor of all those who lead with our hearts to serve people in need, and we ask everyone to join in this commitment to strengthen our community.
Thank you very much. And you wanted to add?
Yes, so again, thank you. It's my pleasure to be back. For the first time, I was here in October, your proclamation supporting home fire prevention week, and appreciate your support of this Red Cross Month proclamation, a tradition that's happened since the 40s in fact, and municipalities, counties, the state legislature, several of us were there in fact, in the chambers of the House and Senate yesterday when they declared Red Cross Day. So we thank your support. I won't go through all those numbers. Sid did deliver them, but just to point out again that we're really fortunate in this county to be supported for our various efforts, but with biomed, our blood collections, the second most in the state, collected in Monongahia County, behind Cana. So we appreciate the support of the community, and we'll let folks know that you can donate most any week in fact. We have blood drives every Friday at our Morgantown office on Pineview Drive, but also additional community drives that can be found via our Red Cross Blood Donor App, our website, and 1-800-REDCROSS. I'll just mention a few in addition to the drives held again every Friday at our Morgantown office. Upcoming at the W Health Science Center, South Tower, that'll be on March 14th, Suncrest United Methodist, March 18th, W Student Rec Center on March 19th, Stonebridge Baptist Church on March 26, and Mon Health Medical Center on March 29. Those locations in themselves give you a better idea of the type of community partners that work with us. Those locations, they have volunteer coordinators who help us to establish that connection in the community, to actually recruit blood donors. So just again, want to point that out. You heard also about our home fire assistance. There were 15 of those families in this county impacted last year and served, in addition to our CPR first aid and our service to the armed forces. The last thing I will say is we have submitted for your consideration, maybe in the near future, I don't recall exactly when you'll be looking at it, but two grant applications. One would support a biomed fleet vehicle that would serve this county and some adjacent counties, but that's a $10,000 request. That would be essentially seed money to raise approximately $35,000 from other entities as well. So that's for your consideration. And then secondly, a home fire financial assistance ask of approximately $4,600, and that goes to support individuals who've been impacted by home fire to make sure their immediate needs are met. So both of those are submitted. Either one would be extremely helpful to the mission. Myself and other colleagues are certainly available to answer any questions that you have on that. So that's all for me. Glad to be here. Before we leave, we'd love to get a picture with you.
Great. So do I have a motion to approve the proclamation as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, first and second, and I'll go ahead and let the commissioners discuss. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You guys have any questions?
My questions, first of all, welcome back, Holly. For those people who do not know, she was an instrumental part in the economic structure, an infrastructure of our county, and I can't say enough about what you've done for us. And then we have a good friend of mine, Dr. Chris Pline, who basically mentored my son through the master's degree. He is now an informaticist at Mon Health, and I continually, and he continually reaches out. And so you have those type of members on the board. You have an exceptional board, and welcome, and really glad to see both of you.
Yeah, just welcome and thank you for all you do, and I feel like I talk to you guys every week when I get the calls about where the blood drives are.
Excellent.
Wilkes-Barre, PA, I think is where the phone call comes from, but so no, it's great to have you in the community, and we appreciate all you do.
Yeah, we do appreciate all you do in the community, and a lot of people don't know the breadth of what you do, in addition to just, you know, the blood drives, the fire prevention efforts, everything that, you know, the CPR classes, all that, so we do appreciate what you do. Melissa was trying to get ahold of me in the last couple of weeks, and I had actually, the app works really well, and when it pops up, and I try to give as much as possible, and I had missed an appointment, and I was like, man, they really are trying to, you know, they're tracking people down that I missed an appointment. That's why I thought she was calling me, but no, she wanted to talk about something else. But anyhow, I really do appreciate all your efforts in the community. It isn't, it goes, it doesn't go unnoticed, so we really do appreciate it, and I appreciate the texts every time that, you know, when there is a blood drive, because I forget a lot, so.
I really miss, 20 years I ran the blood programs at University High School, and I really miss it because we became very creative and won one of the major awards and so on. But the better thing was that the kids learned about donating blood at an early age, and I do not know if they still, I hope they still do that in the schools. Good, and I'm glad to see that.
And I'm disappointed to hear that we're behind Cana, so maybe we can fix that.
How far behind are we?
A couple hundred units, I'd say. I can pull the numbers. I know they're over 4,000. And if I may, I will add just two quick notes. Commissioner Blum, you talked about donating blood, and it finally occurred to me a couple years ago, I've been with the Red Cross coming up on seven years in April, that donating blood really is an act of volunteerism. So that in itself is a volunteer act that really can impact people positively. Lastly, I will note something for your calendars and those listening. August 25th is the Taste of Morgantown. This will be our 14th annual event, and it will be held at the Milan Park Track Complex. So that, those proceeds will also support our home fire campaign, but just really appreciate, it's a great community effort. We have restaurants from all across the county and even some outside the county that come in to, you know, show their best dishes, compete for a variety of awards, and we really appreciate our partners now. This will be our third year partnering, and actually, it's essentially led now by the Milan Park Track Complex. So our gratitude to them, but that's something else for consideration, and if you haven't been to the event, I promise you, it's a great time.
No, thank you, I appreciate it. One quick question, is that per capita or is that in units raised?
I'm sorry, say again.
In regards to the blood drive, Mon County versus Cana County, is your numbers per capita or are they units raised?
That is units raised, exactly.
Okay, you should probably look at that per capita.
Yes, yes.
Because we're probably ahead, but anyhow, let's...
Yeah, now, you know, I've got some friends that are good at math, and maybe I'll ask them to do that. But yeah, yeah, but again, we are really fortunate for this to be, you know, such a leading county in our blood collections, and I just want to acknowledge Sid again, I mean truly, Sid not only is, again, our newest board member, but also what we call a blood donor ambassador, so he's there at blood drives, and there are others of course too, that help as donors come in, to check them in, make sure that, you know, they have any questions answered, and then afterwards, you know, we have our, what we call our canteen, right, because we got to make sure people have their snacks and cranberry juice and whatnot, and so folks like Sid, you know, help with that on every drive.
Well, thank you, and if you guys want to come down for a picture, and Holly, welcome back.
Take a picture, I trust this picture taken... Excuse me. Come up, come up front here. I just thought August 3rd is our back to school bash. We'll be 17,000 students. If you have some literature or something, if I want to get across, or something, I do. In red, you look.
Got the red.
Tom, down just a hair. There you go.
Here, scoot over, everybody scoot over a little bit. Thank you, thank you, yes, ma'am.
There we go. All right, one, two, three. Gotcha. All right, thanks, I appreciate it. August 3rd is our back to school bash, so if you want to have some literature, we can put it...
I'm always holding it in every picture.
Thanks again, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Continue. Nice to see you.
How are you?
Great, good. Thanks for coming in again.
Appreciate you, you know, directing people. Remember telling them to download the Red Cross Blood Donor App.
Absolutely, I've got it on my phone. It pops up. I never knew my blood type before. I went up to St. Francis and gave blood, so.
Thanks, very good.
Okay, next item on the agenda is opening responses regarding RFP 2024 MCC-003 Courthouse Lobby Improvements. And the due date and time was today at 10 o'clock, and I do see that I have two responses that were confirmed by the due date and time. I'll go ahead and provide you with one, Commissioner, and you with one, Tom. And what we're doing is go ahead and open up the packages and verify that we have a separate cost and technical proposal. And there might be, there's probably multiples, because we asked for three copies of each.
Three, four technicals and two, three, four cost proposals for Jared Construction Services.
Jared Construction.
And Veritas Contracting LLC, and we have both a technical and a proposal.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and forward those on for technical evaluation, and then we will open up the cost proposals at a later date.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Correspondence.
So it's congressionally directed spending time. People are putting in their earmark requests, so we're going to have over the next probably three weeks or so, maybe longer, requests for letters of support while people are submitting their requests. So the first one we have is WVU Department of Chemistry. They're submitting a request to, do you know who this was, who this went to, Senator Manchin or Senator Capito?
I believe it went to both.
Both?
It sent one to both.
Okay. For there to update the nuclear magnetic resonance instrumentation. So it's already been signed.
Yeah, per our process, that was one that was directed to me, and I pulled the commissioners, and we unanimously didn't have a problem with signing the letter of support, so that one was signed last Friday. It's on correspondence as our process goes, is to note it under correspondence. The next two have not been brought up between us, so once you bring those up, then I'll entertain a motion to approve signing those, just to make sure we're perfectly transparent.
So these two, there's one each for Senator Manchin and Senator Capito, and these are in support of Morgantown Community Resources, Hazel's House of Hope, to do improvements, kitchen improvements, and ADA improvements to the facility. And one is, they're both for $500,000.
One for Senator Manchin and one for Senator Capito.
Move to approve the president signing both letters of support on behalf of MCR.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second that. Okay, any discussion?
I would like, since it was brought so late, I would like to discuss this before we put it on the agenda next week, if we could table it until next week, because I have some questions that I'd like...
Okay.
The request that came in said they needed it by March 8th.
Of course.
So I'm not sure what you want to do about that.
Okay, well...
I mean, we've got...
We have a motion in a second.
Yeah, you have a motion in a second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, so the motion passes. All right. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration to approve requisition number 84 for the University Town Center Excise Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
The requisition is for $5,597.50, and that is for Munichap for their services in the month of January for the district.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Consideration to approve requisition number six for the University Town Center Series 2023 A Property Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
This request is for $6,623.75, and again, this is Munichap's monthly request, and it's for the month of January.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider for approval requisition number 25 for the Series 2021 B Harmony Grow Phase One Project Fund.
Request is for $203,987.09, and those funds will be paid to Agient Enterprises, The Thrasher Group, and Mon Power.
Move to approve requisition number 25?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, any other new business?
No.
Okay. Reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors? Anybody like to report? Okay, reports from county commissioners. Jeff?
Just a couple of things. We note, to note, to reference Ben's article in the paper this morning about the Bartlett House, we are aware of some of what's going on up there, collecting information, and we are monitoring that situation, seeing what we can do to help, and hopefully can find a path forward for that group, as it does provide a valuable asset for the county for those in need of housing. So just to put it out there that we're aware of it, and we're monitoring the situation. We also had a letter that we didn't note from the Board of Education.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I thought you were going to do that. The Board of Education.
I'll just mention that we received a letter from the Board of Education, and Tom can touch on the details of it then in his report as well.
I'm sorry. We talked about it yesterday, he was going to bring it up, and I completely...
It's out in the folder, we got distracted with it.
Yeah, we got distracted, I'm sorry.
All right, I'll let Tom discuss that, that's all I have.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, Commissioner Blum?
Yeah, as mentioned, we did receive a letter from Ron Lighto and Eddie Campbell. On behalf of the Board of Education, I'll just paraphrase that they are interested in forming a collaborative partnership with Mon County Commission to address the urgent opioid crisis. We understand that the county commission has recently been granted $1 million to support these initiatives, and they believe that they'd like to see it, to work together in a joint effort between the Mon County Schools and County Commission to look at these problems and come up with some long-term solutions. So we want to submit that as correspondence. The others, I received a letter on behalf of the county commission that I gave to the county commissioners. It's a check from Debbie Warner to the Isaac Walton League to build materials to construct concrete ramp and kayak launch out of Cheet Lake for $6,825, and we're just a pass through.
Great.
So we received that. Let's see, third, we had a joint meeting today with Green County, and everyone's always asked, well, why are we meeting with Green County? And they're from another state, but the cooperation has been tremendous and the working relationship, and it now has come to a great possibility, and I could say that on March, let me make sure I get the right date, March 17th, there is going to be a great meet with MotoGP and Green County CVB, the VMCCVB, to discuss the possibility of having the first international motocross in America. And we are talking 30 more thousand people, and there are two sites, and we are going to work together, and hopefully Sean's going to be our head person, you know, making the presentation too. And it was just really exciting that when people say, well, why do we meet, and the three of us have been working together, and this is a direct result of us thinking out of the box, and I really appreciate the county commissioners and Green County, so I don't know if anyone wants to say more than that, but very excited about this.
That would be at high point.
That would be at high point, yes.
In Green County, but...
Right.
We would have to obviously provide the support.
We would work with them, they would be the point, but we would work that... that with them. But we usually get a lot of the hotel motel, the heads on beds, and we also will be getting people coming for food, coming for a lot of different activities, and it's a five-day event. We don't know anymore yet. We'll find out a lot more on the seventeenth. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Since our last meeting, I think it's easy to say that these last, next two weeks will probably be the busiest weeks of our commission agenda. Last Thursday, we had a lobby improvements, RFP tag-up with the facilities director, the administrator, and our consultants. And then we had a broadband call, and then the administrator and I met with the MMPO director. Friday, we had regular staff reports. This week, yesterday, the administrator and I met with our insurance broker as we continue to work through possibilities for our insurance for the current budget year. And the administrator and I also had a meeting with the legal counsel. Today, as Commissioner Blum mentioned, it's our Green County call, and it's a regular day. It's not really a regular day. We have budget hearings all afternoon, and so we start right in this, this Wednesday and next Wednesday, across most of our budget meetings with all of the different offices of the county. This Friday, we have staff reports, and then we do our grants review. The commission meets with staff to do, to go over our evaluation of the sixty-nine grant requests that we received.
Sixty-nine.
This afternoon, I have a, and that, that afternoon, I have a meeting at BOE, if time permits. The BOE president asked me to meet with another, number of other constituents to validate some, some numbers and get really a presentation about what they're intending to do with the Renaissance Center. Again, as, as, as one commissioner, I'm open to just listening to what the, what they're planning on, on doing. It sounds pretty exciting. And again, I'm willing to listen to all the details before making any, any judgment or making any comments on that proposal. Tuesday, we have our Juma meeting and our proactive call with HR. And that's, then we start right back into next Wednesday with budget hearings again, so it's a pretty busy time. I do want to thank the Red Cross for participating today and all their efforts in the county. We forget that it's just not, it's just not blood collection and how those services are vitally needed. And I'm impressed that, based on the conversation, it sounds like we may be ahead of Cana per capita. But let's just do, that's, I challenge, I challenge our citizens to just be ahead both and not be without question that we lead the state in, in collections. So that shows how giving, the sixty-nine grants shows how giving our citizens are, our organizations in our community are. All these organizations that are doing things for our citizens. It's, it's really kind of amazing, and it's one of the toughest decisions we make as commissioners when we go through those. So anyhow, I don't have anything else. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to, go ahead.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.